Good morning, Birmingham. Thank you. I call to order the regular council meeting of November 16th, 2021. We'll have our invocation led by Councilor Clinton Woods and our pledge of allegiance by Councilor Hunter Williams. If you can, please stand.
Good morning. Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for another opportunity just to come before you and serve, Lord. We ask that you guide our decision-making, Lord, as we tackle the largest problems that we see in our city, Lord. We ask that you give us ideas and creativity to bring solutions to the table, Lord. We ask that you allow us to execute our task today with efficiency and effectiveness, Lord. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Will you call the rolls?
Okay. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President Pro Tem Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. President Alexander.
Good morning, present. Could we call for an approval of the minutes from previous meeting, June 1 and June 8, 2021?
They're moved.
Second.
All right, Hunter Williams, Council... Was that Councilor Tate for a second?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Voting should be open. And I think we have you... Okay, now, President Pro Tem Smithman, I think. Your IP is it okay?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. It was getting you mixed up with your mother, and that was years ago.
Oh, Lord.
Councilmember Moore. Thanks, sir. That vote should be...
All right, thank you. Those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready from June 15, 2021, through November 9, 2021. Chief, do we have any communications from the mayor?
Good morning, Madam President. Madam President, Pro Tem, members of the council, members of the public. The mayor will have a report. He is walking in right now to give it.
Perfect timing.
You got him, the boards and agents?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning to the entire council.
Good morning.
It's good to see you all this morning. I have a few notes. And I'll try to make this quick. If you didn't know, I want everyone to know that this week, we joined the White House in recognizing this week as National Apprenticeship Week, which highlights the role apprenticeships provide in allowing people to learn and prepare for well-paying careers in Birmingham and across the nation. I have a proclamation that I'll read in short, but prior to that, I think this is an appropriate time to acknowledge the hard work you all have done. And to say thank you for the Birmingham City Council, all nine of you all, for supporting our apprenticeships efforts with the Birmingham province and your commitment, your financial commitment you've made towards making sure the city of Birmingham stays committed to investing in our future workforce. The proclamation reads in part, "Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is a nationwide celebration that brings together business leaders, labor, career seekers, apprentices and industry associations, educational institutions, and other critical state and local partners to demonstrate their support for registered apprenticeships and show the importance of rebuilding our economy, advancing racial and gender equity, and supporting undeserved communities. Whereas career and technical education programs of study in Birmingham City Schools have shown a genuine commitment to preparing students for their lives after high school by providing them opportunities to earn industry credentials, explore their individual career options, and receive college credit through dual enrollment opportunities in two-year colleges in our service area. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodford, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby declare November 15, 2021, through November 21, 2021, as National Apprenticeship Week in the city of Birmingham." As you know, I sent you all a note earlier today, hoping to get some more information where we can discuss more on workforce in our city next week. Another note, Madam President and council, is that all city of Birmingham offices except for police, fire, and 911 will be closed for Thanksgiving on November 25, which is a Thursday of next week and Friday, November 26. There will be no household trash pickup on those two days. And for residents who normally get their trash picked up on Thursdays and Fridays, please do not leave out trash on those days. Pretty please. Your trash will be picked up the following Monday and Tuesday. Those in the city's pilot trash program, known as City Hall, in the south, as well as the east districts, will have their Thanksgiving holiday trash picked up on Saturday, November 27. Also, bulk trash will not be picked up over the Thanksgiving break. And so for those who need additional detail or information for you all, council, to share with your neighborhood officers and/or residents, please have them visit birminghamal.gov/bolkttrash to get additional information on those dates. A few more notes. This is just a reminder, and we're excited about next Tuesday. I wanted to make a public announcement, as well as follow up on a note I sent everyone, which is inviting you all to attend the inauguration next Tuesday here at City Hall in Lynn Park, in front of City Hall, next Tuesday, November 23, at 12:00 noon. As many of you all are aware, the Alabama High School Athletic Association's Super Seven State Football Championship, city of Birmingham is back in rotation to host the Super Seven. They will be played at Protective Stadium on December 1st through the 3rd. Again, the games will be played December 1st through the 3rd. For more information to our citizens, you can visit ahsaa.com, that's ahsa.com, to get more detail of the schedule for the High School Athletic Association's Super Seven State Football Games. And last note, many of you all know, I was honored to attend the infrastructure bill signing yesterday. I look forward to more information to come down for us to be, not only know what we can do to upgrade our roads, our bridges, our transportation, and even our possible expanding issues around our, I guess, infrastructure related to our warmth... What's the word I'm looking for, Madam President?
Storm warning.
Almost. Storm warning. Couldn't think. I had a full pause in front of me. But what I look forward to mostly is being in a position... We're all, 10 of us, in a position to be aggressive. The state of Alabama is not only receiving $6 billion, but there are billions of dollars will be part of this bill for competitive grants. We will be able to go after, to do a significant amount of infrastructure upgrades to our city. We think we have enough needs. We need to have some pretty good grant writers to be in a position to go after a lot of those grants. So I'm grateful to you all, really grateful to our state, our U.S. Representative, Congresswoman Terri Sewell, the only person in the state's delegation that voted for this. I'm not sure how infrastructure becomes a Republican-Democrat thing. It's kind of stupid to me, but I'm glad the bill passed. I'm glad it's signed into law. I'm glad we'll be in a position to receive a lot of resources to upgrade our city's infrastructure. Madam President and the city council, with that, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate that update and those communications. This time, Mr. Clerk, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
We do not receive any.
All right, thank you. At this time, would you call the items for the consent agenda?
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page 2, with items 2 and 3. Page 3, item number 4 is on consent. Page 4, we have items 5 and 6 on consent. Page 5, item number 7 is on consent. Page 6, item 8 is on consent. Skip over to page 8, we have items 9 and 10 on consent. Page 9, we have items 11, 12, and 13 on consent. Page 11, we have items 14, 15, and 16 on consent. Page 12, item number 17 is on consent. Page 13, item 18 is on consent. Page 14, items 19 and 20 are on consent. Page 15, item number 20 is on consent. Page 16, we have item number 22 on consent. Page 17, items 23 and 24 are on consent. Page 18, item number 25 is on consent. Page 19, we have items 26, 27, and 28 on consent. Page 20, item number 29 is on consent. Page 21, we have items 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35 on consent. Page 22, we have items 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40 on consent. Page 23, we have items 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45 on consent. Page 24, we have items 46, 47, 48, 49, and 50 on consent. Page 25, items 51, 52, 53, and 54 are on consent. Page 26, items 55, 56, 57, and 58 are on consent. Page 27, items 59, 60, 61, and 62 are on consent. On page 28, we have items 63, 64, 65, and 66 on consent. And please note the correction to the synopsis. I think the actual item is correct. That should be Arkansas for Councilor O'Quinn.
Thank you. Councilors, if you have any items to add or remove, would you please indicate with your speaker button, and I'll entertain those items. All right, having none, could I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
They're moved. Second.
Did we do the public hearing stuff?
Before we read the items, are we...
Okay. Did we announce the public hearing stuff? Did we announce the public hearing, partner?
No, we did not. Because that's not a consent item, right?
There's not one on? I mean, I don't know.
Item number 1 is the public hearing, but...
There are some on.
Okay.
On the consent.
Okay. Could you go ahead and announce those? Which ones are those?
Oh, well, you've got several, the weed assessments, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13.
Yes. I'm getting ready to read that statement.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
All right. "All items designated consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced." So we've had a motion and a second.
Okay.
So we're ready for the vote.
All right, thanks. Let's see. Ready now. That vote should be up.
Thank you, council. It's those items that are, for the identified as the consent agenda, those are approved. If you're here to hear one of the consent items, those are approved, and so you can leave now, or you can continue to join with us as we continue the council meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you call up item number 1?
Okay. Item 1, a public show cause hearing to consider the matter of revoking the business licenses issued to Blue Chip Hotels, Assets Group Birmingham, East LLC, doing business as USA Economy Lodge, at 7941 Crestwood Boulevard, Birmingham, 35210. This is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the agenda. Please use the hand raised function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is 14156550002, and the access code is 24866031610. If you are calling via telephone, please press *3 to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion, please. Oh, no motion, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Williams will conduct the public hearing, and Ms. Councilor Williams, we will note that there are some people that have signed up on the speakers list. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. Ms. King, at this time, I'm going to have your department introduce this item on behalf of the city of Birmingham, as well as a follow-up by Birmingham Police Department introducing the calls specifically, both 911 and reports that have been generated. After that three minutes, I'm going to give the ownership and the representative of Blue Chip Motels three minutes as well to speak, and then we will hear from members of the public. Each member will have three minutes. So Ms. King, go ahead.
Yes, Attorney Bernard, please come forward.
Good morning, councilors. Julie Bernard, Office of City Attorney. The, as has been stated, this is a continuation of a public hearing that was held eight weeks ago to consider revocation of the business license for the USA Economy Hotel that is located on Crestwood Boulevard. Sorry, I don't have the address right in front of me. I do, but I don't. To, the council wanted to continue the hearing rather than decide on the revocation on that date, to hear back related to changes that have been proposed by the business to their operations, and to hear where we are from there. So unless there are any questions, I'll turn it over to Councilor Williams to just conduct the hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Would Birmingham Police like to come forward and state what incidences have occurred since And then Detective Pitts, do you have the incidences that occurred to bring us to date that brought this hearing originally in September with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you'll read, since we have three new people that were not here during the first hearing, will you read the incidents that occurred first that brought them before us? And then after that, will you share with the full council what has occurred since they were, since these individuals came before us?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Detective Pitts from the Police Department. At the USA Economy Lodge, 7941 Crestwood Boulevard, from the date of February 2nd, 2021, to August 8, 2021, there were 151 calls for service and 46 reports generated from those calls.
Hey, Detective, I don't want to ruin your flow, but can you speak into the mic a little bit? Because I think that we're having some trouble... When you're in that glass box, you hear yourself real well, but we don't hear you real well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Again, at USA Economy Lodge, 7941 Crestwood Boulevard, from the first meeting, February 2nd, 2021, to August 8, 2021, the calls that was for service was 151 calls for service and 46 reports generated from those calls. Out of those calls, there were seven calls for theft of property. There were nine calls for a person down, which was overdose, yeah, overdoses. There were four calls for loitering on a lot. There were five calls for a person with a warrant. There were 13 calls for a disordered person. There were one call for domestic. There were 26 calls for trespassing. There were four calls with non-verbal 911 calls. There were three calls for a person with a gun. There were one call for a mentally disturbed person. There were one unclassified death. There were three suspicious person calls, two damaged property calls, one prostitution call. There were one call for indecent exposure. There were one call for found property with drugs. One call for unauthorized use of vehicle. One call for assault. There were one call for intoxicated person. And there were two search warrants executed at this location by narcotics. And there were 44 calls for miscellaneous calls. And miscellaneous calls are calls that are unknown at the location until the officer has reached the location, and that officer can determine what type of call it is. And out of those miscellaneous calls, most of those calls do not have reports. So I pulled the actual 911 call from the miscellaneous call. On February 28, the caller states he believed there's prostitution and drugs being sold at the location. On March 1, the caller states he has been watching drug sales for three days out of his room. On March 5, the complainant stated the customer is refusing to pay for a cab service. On May 21, the complainant stated someone called, said he's been threatened by a neighbor with a gun. On May 9, the complainant stated there's a group of people hanging out in the back of the location, unknown if they are using drugs. On May 14, the complainant stated there is an unwanted person on the property, and they need to leave. On May 16, the complainant stated that the male at the office, the clerk, threatened his life. On June 4, the complainant stated that a male half-naked walking around the property. June 21, the complainant stated a female, Ashley, is prostituting in the room. July 6, the complainant stated someone keeps coming in her room without her permission. July 6, the complainant stated he would tell officer what's going on when they arrive. A male is being very loud and saying officers better hurry up. On July 8, the caller requested the police to the location. The caller stated a black female and a white female are having an altercation. The black female has a knife, and the subject is in room 351. On July 18, the caller is requesting a unit to the location. There's a white male beating on everyone's door. And on July 7, a possible overdose at the location. And again, those calls was from February 21 to August 8. And now, since the last meeting, September 21 until November 15, council, there was 20 calls at this location. Out of those 20 calls, there were four reports generated. And from those calls, there were two calls for a domestic violence. There were two calls for a wanted person. There were two calls for disordered person. There were two calls for a person down. There were unclassified deaths at this location. There were one call for theft of property. And there were seven calls for miscellaneous calls and one traffic hazard. And the miscellaneous calls, on September 18, the complainant stated he was in an argument on Facebook, some guys who stay in Gay City, and now they are threatening his life. On September 21, the caller gave no location and hung up the phone. On October 1, the caller stated it's a white female, multi-colored shirt, black pants, screaming for help on the back side of the location. On October 9, the paramedics was called to the location of possible overdose. On October 20, riot with the medics on a possible overdose. On October 28, the caller stated outside of the location, need officer to the location, called people at the hotel, was supposed to be refunding him his money, and refused to do so. Again, council, from the last meeting, which was September 21, 2021, until November 15, there were 20 calls for service at this location and four reports generated.
Thank you, Detective. Captain, do you want to speak?
Yes, I'm Lieutenant John Green, East Precinct. And do you have any questions about current calls? What's reported to me is pretty much same business as usual on this property. The calls have slowed, unknown why, but we really don't get many calls, like what Detective Pitts just described.
All right. Thank you, Lieutenant. All right, at this time, we are going to hear from the ownership and/or the representative from Blue Chip Hotel, DBAing as USA Economy Lodge. You guys have three minutes. Mr. Clerk, if you'll keep time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Good morning. Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Madam Pro Tem, and members of the council. And members of the council, good morning.
Can you speak into the mic just a little more? We can't hear you.
Yes, ma'am. I will try to speak up as well. Change is hard, as we all know and have experienced over the last year, more aptly and real than most times. Changing a pandemic is very difficult. And as my client has learned, and I'll try to summarize my presentation that's being passed out, along with the last presentation we gave, I will try to be very brief, Mr. Williams, at the request of the chair, to keep it to three minutes. As we heard, the number, the type, and the severity of many of the calls that were experienced have decreased. I want to thank Birmingham PD, and my client wants to thank Birmingham PD, for working with us and giving them a chance to improve their record. But we're not there yet, and my client admits that they're not there yet. We're happy to report that long-term guests are no longer at the property. No one is currently staying there, or will stay there again, for more than 30 days. All guests have been relocated at my client's expense to other transitional or long-term housing that they've been able to work out. They worked very hard to help these people locate other housing, and if necessary, to pay for them to go somewhere else until they can find a long-term place to stay, to give them a safe landing, or at least a safe transition. I'm also happy to report the progress that's been made of the last presentation that was presented to you. Notably, a redevelopment plan, or at least concept, was presented, and that has a little bit more meat on the bones, so to speak. My client proposes a $3 to $4 million reinvestment in this property to convert it to studio housing.
Williams, at the request of the chair, to keep it to three minutes. As we heard, the number, the type, and the severity of many of the calls that were experienced have decreased. I want to thank Birmingham PD, and my client wants to thank Birmingham PD for working with us and giving them a chance to improve their record. But we're not there yet, and my client admits that they're not there yet. We're happy to report that long-term guests are no longer at the property. No one is currently staying there or will stay there again for more than thirty days. All guests have been relocated at my client's expense to other transitional or or long-term housing that they've been able to work out. They worked very hard to help these people locate other housing and, if necessary, to pay for them to go somewhere else until they can find a long-term place to stay to give them a safe landing or at least a safe transition. I'm also happy to report the progress that's been made of the last presentation that was presented to you. Notably, a redevelopment plan, or at least concept, was presented, and that has a little bit more meat on the bones, so to speak. My client proposes a three to four million dollar reinvestment in this property to convert it to studio-type multifamily affordable housing with 155 to 175 studio units with a target rental of about $1.25 per square foot. These are two to 600 square foot units. That's very affordable housing, something that the city direly needs. They're also proceeding with a separate redevelopment plan, entertaining offers to sell this property. They're currently under negotiation with two separate buyers who've offered letters of intent, and there are others, potential purchasers, that have expressed great interest. And so they're moving along both fronts, both to self-redevelop as well as to sell it for redevelopment into long-term multifamily housing. Also happy to report that, starting the week after Thanksgiving, November 29th, off-duty sheriff's deputies will be on-site as security. This is frankly taken much longer than we'd hoped. That ball was rolling before we were last here and continued to slowly roll, but I got confirmation yesterday from Detective Sanders that he has people scheduled to be available. And I actually, this morning, at about 5:30, sent him a contract for those officers to review for their off-duty security work.
All right, Mr. Hornady, your time's up, but since that was abruptly short, Mr. Clerk, will you add three more minutes for Mr. Hornady because he obviously needs a little more time?
Thank you, Mr. Williams and Mr. Clerk. Our client has continued to engage in training and oversight with the staff, and they get daily reports on the status of the property. Cash is no longer accepted whatsoever. I reviewed the report. Since the beginning of September, they've not accepted cash for room payments. They're continuing to refine compliance with the parking pass requirements, continuing to work with the security on-site and guests to use the courtesy officer number for non-emergency situations to relieve the pressure on the city's resources. They've improved all lighting, both building-mounted and in the parking lot. All staff have now completed a human trafficking awareness training. A Flock license plate reader has been ordered and will be installed once it arrives. There is, apparently, I need to be in the camera-making business and not the law business, but there's a five-to-eight-week delay on those cameras if you buy them off the market. And so we're waiting for that to get a confirmation on it, but it will be tied into the Real-Time Crime Center once it arrives. They've also ordered, and should be installed this week, six exterior pan tilt and zoom cameras. Those will be pole or building-mounted to give visualization or or views on the outside exterior of all sides of these two buildings so that, as much as possible, there can be eyes on everything. Those, of course, will be linked to the Real-Time Crime Center once they're online and also available to the off-duty deputies who are working security. The goal also, as soon as scheduling allows, is to transition from a private licensed security company to off-duty sheriff's deputies 24/7. That likely will look like two shifts where the night shift is two deputies on-site and the daytime shift would be one deputy on-site. Currently, it is a licensed private security company, and they have one daytime and one nighttime shift. We're looking forward to the presence that the sheriff's deputies will provide to further decrease these calls and the attraction from the neighborhood to go on to this property. My client has spent or invested over $150,000 in this property and in these changes since we last met with an eye to doing just as much between now and the end of the year in addition to the redevelopment plans. They're also working with the city on permitting for a frontage fencing. There are specific requirements that we weren't aware of for frontage fencing, but they'd like to install that to decrease foot traffic onto the property further. That would frankly pretty much enclose the property except for the ingress egress of vehicles.
Now, Mr. Hornady, that is your six minutes. If you'll make some final, if you'll close up and make some final remarks, please.
In closing, I look forward, and my client looks forward, to entertaining the council's questions. We also would ask, don't take our word for it. Have us back in thirty days and let us prove that the things we've said the first time, the things that we've reported are done today, and the things that we expect to be done over the next two or three weeks are completed. And we hope that these measures will further decrease the number of calls. We can't guarantee that. No one can. If I could answer that question, then I wouldn't be in this business. But we do think we're taking more than reasonable steps to deter any bad action at this property and want to work with the city to continue to move forward in a positive direction. So we look forward to your questions and in seeing you in thirty days to report more progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hornady. Ms. Garner, do we have any callers on the line? No callers, all right? So we're not, we are not going to take callers then. We will hear from members of the public. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on this item, I know we had three people sign up on the sign-in sheet, but you can go ahead and come forward, and if you'll just state your name and address. And each member of the public will have three minutes.
Am I audible?
Yes.
I'm Anna Aldridge, and since 1996, I have lived at 5137 Northumberland Road, which is about two and a half blocks from the back of this establishment. My first clue that we had a problem was a few years ago when a man knocked on my door at dusk with a six-pack cooler containing partially-used toiletries to sell to me. But the real wake-up was called with one Sunday afternoon when my neighbor rushed to my door to tell me someone had just loaded the pressure washer from my carport into their truck and was headed back for the compressor. You know from police reports that property crime in this area has just gotten worse and worse, and that's not counting the 151 police calls in six months to the USA motel property itself. We all know that what someone is likely to do is what they have done. These folks have, by their own omission, flagrantly violated the terms of the short-term lodging license granted them by the city, allowing people to reside there continuously for as long as a year. That would seem to constitute 335 violations for each such person. I wonder if they've done as they promised and moved out everyone who had stayed thirty days. If so, then no one should be counting on this place for ongoing housing, which was a concern expressed the first time this came up for a vote. Earlier this year, we had a recurring issue with USA residents pushing buggies from the area stores and abandoning them behind at the edge of the road near the back entrance to the motel. And when it got to be about thirty of them, our neighborhood people started calling the city about it. And the management solution was to have their employees push them down about a block under the I-20 bridge. So we started calling again, and I'm not sure who actually finally picked them up. This council has put a lot of resources into landing the Amazon Distribution Center and the Veterans Treatment Facility. Surely, there's a use of this property that better aligns with Birmingham's goals for Eastwood. Changing all the light bulbs and putting up privacy screens on the fence, this is really too little, too late. I ask you to trust the recommendation made by the Safety Council two months ago and revoke this license. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aldridge. Would the next speaker like to come forward, please? And if you'll state your name and address.
My name is Jerome Chapman, and I live about a block from Anna. And on 133 Deer Park Drive, once again, about two blocks from this property. With regard to the things that I've seen in the reports from our Neighborhood Association and the various good, law-abiding citizens of my neighborhood, there are a number of things that concern me. I've lived in this neighborhood for over ten years, and it seems like every time there is like a, you know, a major problem, it always links back to this one particular place. When we're talking about the number of drug violations that we've seen there, we're talking about the number of times you've had a person down. That means something has gone completely and totally off the rails. When, if things are going successfully in that business, that call never gets made, and yet it's still happening. And I would remind the council that this is about 100 yards from a middle school and right next door to a proposed mental health facility. I don't feel like this is a good recipe for success for our city, and I would like to be on record for supporting the revocation of this license. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would the next speaker please come forward, and if you will state your name and address?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, councilors. I'm Barbara White, 4352 Mountaindale Road. I'm the president of the Crestline Community, which is made up of Eastwood and Crestline neighborhoods, and I'm the secretary of the Crestline Neighborhood and longtime officer. I hope you realize from hearing from these neighbors of the USA Economy Lodge that we have a serious problem, which the last council was unable to address. The taxpaying citizens of our city and their children are being exposed to drug sales, prostitution, it's not a word I use a lot, violence, and really illegal behavior which endangers all the neighbors. I hope the five ladies, new members, no, well, a couple of you older, that's not right, members, there are five ladies on the council of conscience, I am sure, will help in revoking this license. USA has now put a curtain at the back of its fence on Montavalla Road. Don't know what the purpose of that was, but little children are not looking, or they're not little children, they're junior high, are not looking in at drug deals or whatever. This is hearsay, but I understand the residents have been told not to call the police. Obviously, the police say in the past eight weeks, there have been twenty calls. This is unacceptable. We had 151 calls in seven, in 28 weeks. That averages four to five a week. That's ridiculous. You voted code. We have a problem in the city with code enforcement. I'm requesting of you that you, who are the rulers on the code-breaking, decide that this code needs to be revoked, that needs to be enforced. You are not only the makers of this code, you are the enforcers. Please, please, please do your job. It's obvious that it's not the long-term residents who were the problem because there are still problems being being reported. We don't know how many have not. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come forward and state your name and address.
I'm at 128 Deer Park Drive. I just want to say, you know, I want to show my support and solidarity for the revocation. But the plans to create a studio-type multifamily housing facility sound pretty good. It's just hard to, with their track record, trust that that's actually what's going to happen. So if, in the least, we could move for a temporary revocation of their licensure until we can ensure that something good is going to come up of their development plans, you know, I, I think affordable housing is something that we lack in multifamily affordable housing, especially in our area, safe multifamily affordable housing. So if that's really their plan and they're going to make it happen, that sounds great. But for the time being, our neighbors are in imminent danger, and this is an immediate issue, so a temporary revocation sounds like a good in-between. I don't know if that's on the table, but thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Yes, sir. If you'll come forward and state your name and address.
I don't need it. I'm okay.
Sure, yeah.
No, 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 it's fine. It's absolutely fine.
If you'll state your name and address, please.
My name is Michael F. Cooney, C-O-O-N-Y. I live at 128 Deer Park Drive. It seems like Deer Park Drive is well-represented here today. I'm wondering a few things from the last meeting. Why was there only a six-month period of look back? Because the problems that we've outlined by Detective Pitts have been going on for years. And I noticed that Mr. Hornaby just mentioned that there are no more residents staying greater than thirty days. I wonder if that's greater than thirty days or greater than thirty sequential days, meaning that someone could check out one day and re-register for another thirty days. Just a scenario that might be possible, I don't know. As obviously by Director, Detective Pitts, we still have issues continuing after that period. Yesterday, I handed out with Ms. Aldridge about 200 flyers into the neighborhood, and the police station went to Putnam Middle School, and every person with whom I spoke was in agreement that this license should be revoked. Not one person disagreed to that at all, and I think I spoke to 14 people. Also, there was, I think, an error perhaps in the last meeting. Mr. Hornaby mentioned Big Business Chaotic Chaos, which is a garage next door, I think, and perhaps you can correct me if I'm wrong, stated that there was no lighting there. The owner, Michael Allen, spends over $200 a month for lighting for his facility. And if I say, I may be stand corrected with that later if need be. Also, Mr. Hornaby said today that the selling progress is moving along, but in the last minutes, I believe from the meeting or from the meeting I heard, that it was, that there was, existed a signed contract. I don't know who that's with or if it, if that's true, or if, again, I might have misunderstood that there was a signed contract. Do I get music like at the Oscars for my time?
No, but you do have one minute left.
Thank you. Appreciate the warning. So also, you know, regardless of relocation, I, there is a Fair Housing Act, as someone pointed out at the last meeting. I don't want anyone put out on the streets. I have compassion, a compassionate heart, and I feel for anyone who has the troubles in their life that created a situation in which they wind up residing here. The reviews are horrible. If you look online, they're horrible, roaches, infested guns, everything. Also, I believe Mr. Matus stated that they would begin showing up at or being in attendance at neighborhood meetings. We've had two, and if they were there, we didn't see them, and they were physical meetings, not Zoom meetings. My, one more story, if I may share my personal experience with a person from the Economy Lodge. I was walking my dogs one night about midnight, a misty night, and I walked up onto my lot from my front door to my front door, and there was a gentleman, I'm about 5'6", okay, and he was about 6'5", and he mumbled something through his mask. I said, "May I help you?" He said, "I'm looking for Montclair Road." And I took him down. I said, "Let me take you down to the street light. I wanted to get in some light there at midnight, and I'll give you the directions." And after he left, I followed him, and he was, that's where he headed, was to the Economy Lodge. I'm also concerned about property values. I bought my house five years ago for less than $100,000, and there's a house around the corner from me that's smaller than mine, that's asking price of $290,000. So I'm just wanting our property values to continue to escalate as they have over the past few years. And I guess the last thing I'll comment on is you can put pink lipstick on a pig's snout and it's still a pig. And you can put unscrew the red light at Bell Watling's establishment and replace it with a green light. Neither does that make it Christmas, nor does it change what goes on inside those rooms. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooney. And then, and
No music.
Where, no, thank you. Just because you asked a procedural, just because there was a procedural question, the reason that the council hears the past six months of services is because that is the law, and so we're allowed to determine whether it's a public safety hazard based on the past six months of service.
I understand. And also, one thing I forgot to mention, that there was an incident last year at that, that started at that facility that resulted in a murder of one of my neighbors just down the street. I think you're probably I think you're probably aware that that's not captured in the six months, but that was helicopters above. I've never gotten recorded messages from ALEA on my telephone telling me to stay indoors. So it was a very, it was a very spooky day as a result of that. Thank you for extending my time.
I remember that all too well, getting those calls that one of our constituents was murdered.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other speakers that wish to speak on this item? Seeing nobody, I'm going to run through some emails that I believe were sent to the entire council. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read them, but they were from residents that live in this adjacent neighborhood who were not able to be here today due to work conflicts. The first one is, and I'm going to kind of paraphrase and run through these because I know everybody in here can read, but anyway, the first one involves a resident in Eastwood that came across this gentleman pictured here, who was high and actively overdosing. They just put him out on the street, and he had to call the medics because instead of them calling the medics, he was put on the street and adjacent to the neighborhood. So a member of the neighborhood had to get out of their house at 11:30 in the night and call for the medics once he was dumped on the street. Next, resident by the last name of Smith, "I'm writing to strongly urge you to vote in favor of the revocation of the business license at the USA Economy Lodge. I'm a resident in the Crestdale Gardens neighborhood. Our home is located on Barre Meadow Road, two streets behind the hotel. The establishment is not only an eyesore but safety threat to our neighborhood. While trying to enjoy our backyard, several times per week, we hear screaming, yelling coming from the motel. Shopping carts, trash, litter, all have been put on Montavale Road. On many occasions, we have been approached by transient people. Two homes on our street directly across and adjacent to our home have been occupied by squatters while they have been in the midst of renovation. We have amazing neighbors that watch out for each other, but there's no reason that I should not feel safe while taking my dog before or after I leave for work each day. I'm worried that the schoolchildren that attend Putnam might be approached or lured off by one of the motel clients. The motel makes me feel on edge." And the, it goes on and on and on. Y'all can read that. The next was from Amos Fells. "I'm writing to express my concern with the recent events that have occurred at the USA Economy Lodge. Located two streets over from my house, I love my home, but I don't feel safe knowing what is going on, and the criminal activity has not stopped. I would like to be there tomorrow but cannot be, yada, yada, yada. Good morning, Mr. Williams." This is by Mr. Gilbert. "I'm writing you in reference to USA Economy Lodge. I've witnessed a lot of unseemly behavior around this eyesore. I know you're possibly voting to revoke their business license. I want my voice to be heard on the matter. Please shut down this place. We do not..." Goes on and on. From Ms. McDavid, "I'm writing for your help to show my support for the revocation of the business license of the USA Economy Lodge. Like many of my surrounding, hard-working, taxpaying neighbors of the Crestdale Gardens area, I'm going to be at work, but I want my voice to be heard. This is a potential life-changing matter. I go to the extreme of life-changing because many neighbors are fearful of their day-to-day safety if the USA Lodge motel is given the opportunity to continue with their business practices. It is extremely sad when you are fearful in your own home, which is directly linked to a motel that should have been condemned several years ago, however, has been overlooked and allowed to continue to terrorize surrounding family-oriented neighborhood." And it goes on and on and on. The next email is from Ms. Whitworth. "I apologize for the last-minute message." And she goes on to discuss the VA Medical Center. She feels that the, it has a, that there is, that basically that this is not a good fit for the neighborhood. Anyway, goes on to worry about the amount of narcotics activity and people with addiction there. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments that they would like to ask? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Clark.
This question is for the attorney. I was wondering, like, when does the owner plan to cease operations as a hotel and begin to pursue the redevelopment that was proposed?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Councilor Clark, and welcome. Congratulations. That's something that we detailed a little bit in the first presentation, and had I had more than three minutes, or I guess six minutes, we could have gone into in more depth. It is in the packet that I sent around.
I mean, just when is just a date, pretty much.
Yeah.
To cease.
2022. So next year, probably mid-year, so it would be a two-phase redevelopment of the property. There are two buildings on site. One would be redeveloped first, the second would be redeveloped, and then at that point, once the second opens as multifamily, they would cease operations as a motel and then be a multifamily. But the target is mid-2022. They should have the first building complete for the renovation, and then end of the year, the second renovation would be complete.
Okay. My other question is, is this a part of a chain, like a family of hotels?
No, ma'am. It is not branded.
Is it related to the USA Economy Lodge at Wendell Drive in Atlanta, Georgia?
I don't know. My client might be able to answer.
So this was owned by a previous gentleman, so he had several USA Economy Lodges around the US, so he's just had that name, but it's not related.
It's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, they're not related. They were in the past from the previous owner, but now it's different ownership groups.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Clark, just so you know, I think that we passed it. Does everybody get the original? Yeah, so in the original plan, they showed that they would do their diligence in closing in four to six months with the new owner.
That was in September.
Which, of course, was in September. Yes, that is correct. Do any other members of the council have any questions for anybody? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege since this is my district. You know, we have several members of the neighborhood and the community that surrounds the USA Economy Lodge that have spoken here today. We had actually more than that that have sent us collectively emails because they could not be here for work. You know, when you have, you know, this came before us with 151 calls for service, two search warrants served in hotel rooms. When you think of a search warrant, you think of it being served on a brick-and-mortar property, whether it be a business or a residence. Not that a hotel room is slinging that much drugs that there needs to be a search warrant done on an individual room. And quite frankly, this has been something that has terrorized the community around it. It's terrorized my office with phone calls and complaints about what's going on. And everything from the shopping carts, which was mentioned by one of the residents, where there was a long period of time where Public Works had to get the crane out to get all of the shopping carts that were pushed from the back of this out into the creek right in front of the Eastwood neighborhood, because the solution was just to push it into the neighborhood. That seems to be the theme of what's going on. Push the problem into the neighborhood. In this packet is pictures of yellow fencing that was put up around so the neighborhood could not see what was going on. While this is probably refreshing to the neighborhood not to have to see the illegal activity going on, putting up a yellow fence that is, that is, you can't see through does not solve it. I believe, Ms. Garner, there was a video of one of the residents lurking the past couple of weeks in, through our neighborhood, or not our neighborhood, but the community that surrounds it. So we, so, and then after the police were called, this was confirmed by the magistrate to be their residence was the USA Economy Lodge. It's that, I know that that's, doesn't seem like much, but that has been a very consistent problem in the Eastwood neighborhood. When, and it's a sad thing, when people need money for their addiction, they go out in the Eastwood neighborhood and they burglarize the residences that are adjacent to the USA Economy Lodge. It is very sad. It is unfortunate. However, it is not fair to the taxpaying citizens that live adjacent for the city not to enforce its ordinances and for the city to allow this type of activity to occur. When we originally met, and I spoke to the captain over at East Precinct, she said the number-one calls for service right now and the number-one drain on my resources for my officers who are short-staffed is this very one location. Obviously, that has changed somewhat in the past three months while they've been put on probation, but yet there's still been an additional unclassified homicide, as well as many emergency calls for Birmingham Fire and Rescue to continue to respond to overdoses, which usually could be homicides if they don't Narcan them. So I just want to point out that it overwhelmingly, the neighborhood, the adjacent residents are all succinct in the fact that they feel like that this is not fair for them to have to live next to. It does promote a lack of safety for them. I think it is a public safety hazard, and I think we are well within our rights as a council to revoke this business license. Not to mention the point that was brought up during the last meeting is the inequity that we have in this community when it comes to what our city's schoolchildren are exposed to. If you think for a single day that any surrounding community that has their own school system would let their middle-school children be exposed to this type of activity, you are wrong, and we should be no different here in the city of Birmingham. We have a responsibility, not only to our taxpaying citizens that surround it, but also to our parents and the children that attend Putnam Middle School to make sure that they are safe. With that, Ms. King, I know you would like to read what our legal ability is to revoke a business license.
That is correct. Thank you, Councilor Williams. Under Section 3A1, 131 of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, in order for the council to revoke the business license, there are four considerations. The first is for violation of any provision of the Business License Code or of any ordinance of the City of Birmingham, or any statute of the State of Alabama relating to the business for which license is issued by the licensee, his agent, servant, or employee. The second cause for reason is if the licensee, his agent, servant, or employee under color of such license violates or aids or abets in violating or knowingly permits or suffers to be violated any penal ordinance of the City of Birmingham or any criminal law of the State of Alabama. The third reason is if the licensee or his agent filed or caused to be filed any application, affidavit, statement, or other misleading statement, or omission of a material fact in connection with the issuance or renewal of any license. And the fourth reason is if the licensee, his agent, servant, or employee is found to be operating the business for which such license is issued in such a manner as to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or so as to constitute a nuisance.
Thank you, Ms. King. I think that two councilors indicated that they wanted to speak, or three. So I'm just working my way from the left, if that's cool. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, that's fine. So first of all, I just want to say that my heart goes out to the residents who have had to deal with this matter. I too know what it feels like to live in a community or a neighborhood and be plagued by some of those challenges that come as a result of a hotel or a business owner not managing their property properly. I know what it feels like to, you know, to have folks coming up to your door high, or, you know, just rumbling through, you know, your car at night and, you know, pulling on your car doors, or even my neighbors having that same feeling of not feeling safe and not being comfortable to just sit out on their porches in the daytime. And so I definitely want to make sure that, you know, not only are we addressing this issue here, but we're looking at all neighborhoods, you know, that are dealing with these issues. And so I just wanted to say that my heart definitely goes out to you because I can definitely relate.
Mr. Plante?
Yes, sir. I want to reiterate Counselor Moore's comments. You're certainly right, Counselor Williams, that no neighborhood deserves to be subjected to this type of activity. Counselor Moore and I share a corridor along First Avenue North where Motel 8, Motel American, Sky Inn, Relax Inn, and Bama Motel all fit the same description that has been, you know, detailed to us here and for the same length of time. I've been living in, you know, the surrounding community for 20 years, and I've seen it firsthand. So I don't want to distract from the issue at hand, but I would urge my colleagues that, hey, we're not done here. There are businesses like this all over the city of Birmingham that are plaguing our neighborhoods. So, you know, let's take action, but let's not stop here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chairwoman Tate?
Good morning. I'd just like to echo, you know, what everyone else has said here. When you look at the number of reports that have come in since last year, and you guys were given an extension to rectify the situation, and 20 calls later, we still have, we have an obligation and a duty to protect the public and to make sure that people are living in safe, sustainable neighborhoods where they do not have to feel like they are in harm's way. And also, you have a middle school there as well. With all due respect, I just feel the honor, where has accountability come in at? You know, when you start having these problems, you present your business as a, you know, a hotel, and you got people there that are strung out on drugs. I looked at a picture, I see drugs in pictures, guns. You have a problem that you should have been addressing long before now. And so if you find people that, I realize we do have a drug problem, we have a mental health issue, but your establishment cannot be used, you know, for these type of activities to carry, to carry out. As Counselor O'Quinn stated, it's just not your place. It's all down First Avenue. And as a city council and a person that has been elected to represent the city of Birmingham, we have an obligation to protect the public. And so I don't feel that these people, the residents in the area, in the surrounding areas should be plagued by a business that wants to make money and not address the situation that's taking place on your property. So, you know, as a counselor, we have an obligation and, you know, a duty to make sure that we protecting the public.
Thank you, Chairwoman Tate. Does anybody else have any comments? If not, at this time, I'd like to make a motion, Madam President, that we vote to revoke the business license of the Blue Chip Hotel Assets Group, DBANG, as USA Economy Lodge, based on the fact of it being a threat to public safety due to the call volume that has been presented to us, as well as the nature of the calls for the previous six months.
Second. It's been moved improperly second. We have no further discussion. We'll call for the vote. We'll call for the vote. Thank you, councilors. Thank you to the residents and to the owner for participating in our public hearing. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. We should be going to item number 30, which is on page 20. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a paving reimbursement agreement? That cannot be correct. Give me one second here. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a paving reimbursement agreement with the Jefferson County, Alabama, to provide for improvements to Grants Mill Road between I-459 and State Route 119 as a part of the Jefferson County Grants Mill Corridor Improvement Project to include milling, resurfacing, and other necessary repairs to road bid and for placement of final paved surface with the city's portion of the cost to be $500,000 for a portion of the road away located in the city of Birmingham. And this is item permanent operation, so to pass it today, I need unanimous consent.
Hello, for you, see?
Second.
Okay, we'll just do, who's out? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion on the item itself, please.
So move.
Second.
Okay, got it.
All right, any questions regarding this item? This is the first reading. Sorry. Ms. Abbott.
I was just reading the response that we got back from Mr. Mitchell, and the item says that this is, that milling will be done, but the response from Mr. Mitchell says it's really just an overlay project. So which is it? Are we milling and then putting down new surfacing, or is this just an overlay project?
My understanding you have to mill before you do an overlay because you can't just put it on top of the current surface. So you have to mill in order to add a new surface to it.
Oh, yes, you can put it right over an existing surface. The city of Birmingham did it for years, and that's why our streets meet the top of our curbs. So, yeah, you can. So this person, whoever this person is that responded to you, says it's just an overlay project. So I would like to know what it really is.
Okay. We can get Mr. Fowler to come in and explain along with Samuel Parsons because this is a county project, so he can probably answer that question.
All right. Hi, Mr. Parsons, thank you.
Morning, councilors.
Good morning.
My name is Samuel Parsons. I'm an engineer in the Department of Transportation, representing James Fowler. And pardon me, I didn't get to hear your discussion from outside. Do you have any questions in particular about this project?
Yes. I don't know whether this is your response or somebody else's response because there's no signature on it, but the question yesterday was about this road project being in the watershed for our drinking water, which is Lake Purdy. And we do have this nice map that does show Lake Purdy now on it, which is excellent. Thank you. But this note says this is really just an overlay project, but the item says it's milling and paving. So I just wanted to know, are we just overlaying the existing road, or are we actually milling it? And the person here says that, you know, it won't cause any problems to mill it, but I've seen them mill roadways, and the stuff that they mill, you know, ends up all over the place.
That's a fair question. And yes, sorry about the confusing term between overlay and milling overlay. Sometimes those do get used interchangeably, but in this, in this particular instance, it will be a mill and overlay. And the county is a very responsible contractor when they do their own projects. Just when, this is when they do any paving project, they incorporate all necessary erosion control practices, silt fences, waddles, berms, geomats, all kinds of different things that are industry standard for these types of projects, especially in a watershed. And in particular, one of the things that they're doing on this project and why it's such a good value for the city is they're repairing a lot of the drainage ditches on the edge. Those are some of the most damaged parts of the road, even though we don't think about that when we're driving on it. Everything really goes back to water, as Counselor Abbott has observed. And part of this project is the repair of those ditches so that the water gets slowed down, the energy is abated, before it starts carrying away pollutants and trash into Lake Purdy. So that's part of the emphasis of this project, and the county's always done a good job with these things. So it's a really unique opportunity to get good value out of our limited paving dollars here.
Will we have anyone watching out to make sure that everything is as wonderful as you hope that it will be?
Yes, ma'am. There will be inspectors on site, construction and engineering inspectors.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you being here to answer those questions because to me, our drinking water is one of our most precious resources, and we need to make sure that nothing gets in it that we don't want.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.-
Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. I don't see any other speakers that request to speak.
Thanks.
Thank you. Don't have any other questions, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Madam President, can I ask a question before we vote?
Yes, ma'am.
And that question would be, does the city of Birmingham have a policy of notifying the waterworks when someone has requested a project within the watershed? Because they didn't seem to know anything about this, and we have a big apartment complex rezoning request that's coming up, and I'm just wondering who is in charge of notifying the waterworks when someone requests to do something in the watershed?
So Counselor Abbott, we'll do a follow-up with that because the issue is actually a county issue. So in terms of notification, the notification would come from the county if it's their issue. However, if it's a city-related issue and we're doing it a joint project with the county, we'll follow up with you on what our protocol is in terms of notification to any utility or to the waterworks. We'll do a follow-up with you on that. But on this one specifically, because the issue is county-related, they would have done the notification.
Okay, so that means that planning and zoning and all those kind of rezoning issues where people want to disturb the earth in the watershed, we are handling that through our departments contacting the waterworks?
I don't understand your question. Say it again.
In planning and zoning, we hear a lot of cases for rezoning property so that people can develop it. Okay, if you're going to bulldoze all the trees off a piece of property and disturb all of the earth, would our people contact the waterworks to let them know about the request and get their input on what their opinion is about what is being proposed?
So yes, to that point, yes. Yes.
You're sure?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there's a breakdown here somewhere, but we'll find out what it is. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. We're ready for the vote. That item passes. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk. I think that's it. I was going to agree with you. I don't see any more. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the rules and allow our speakers to speak, and-
So move.
Second. Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Kamal Africa.
Do you have that list?
Kamal Africa? Is she here?
I have it, yes.
Okay. Next is Charlie Powell. Charlie Powell?
Mr. Powell, would you come forward? Would you give us your name, your address? And please be mindful that you have three minutes, and we'll have the clerk to start the clock, and if you would, please stay within that timeframe. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Powell. I'm the founder of Panic. My topic of the day about two things, that is, the relocation of the Peoples in the Super Farm Site, which is Fairmont, Cottageville, and Harrima Park, and the complete shutdown of Bluestone. Now, they over there, we hear it now that they are island, you know? You know, they is not running. But if you crank your car up and it's island, it's still running. With that being said, they operated over there two years without a business license or permit, letting off all that soot, fume, and stuff that's killing us. And then the EPO, the EPA over there, they are still digging and cleaning, but I don't think they doing the job that they should be doing. We're the ones suffering. Now, that plant license been suspended up until April, but they've been operating two years without a license or permit. Now, how that happen, and nobody know, I just don't see something this milk ain't clean. And we're the ones suffering, the Peoples. I've talked to one of the Peoples on the city, one of the lawyers for the city, their legal team. He come out there, he got a taste of how the Peoples feel. I asked him, did he want me to bring them down here and bring them outside? They just done had enough now. He talked to some of them, and I don't think he got the response that he was liking to get, and I knew he was going to get that response. The Peoples is tired. They've been living out there for so long, and it's been just neglected out there. Those plants come out there, plant after plant. Now, I can name a bunch of them. Now, I no longer reside out there. I have property out there, and I was just sitting here thinking. I'm in the district all the way around. I've got a house over there at Eastlake. Matter of fact, I got two of them over there. I live in one off and on, but I'm residing in some point now, you know? But all of the other neighborhoods are getting a lot of attention, and down there ain't getting none. I had to leave from down there. I'm sick myself. My wife got stage four cancer, so that's what's been going on down there. I came back in my neighborhood where I was born and raised to help my Peoples, and we just ain't getting it. Now, this plant is started going on, you know? It's doing small things. Even the mayor went to school out there. He was raised out there too. He's not out there, but I come back to help that neighborhood. We also had a president of the, of the, our council was born and raised out there. He hadn't done nothing. Ain't nothing been done. The Peoples getting tired of it, and they asking me to speak for them, and the next time, they going to come down here with me. It's getting out of hand with me now.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. We appreciate you bringing this item to us. Some of the issues that you raised are under current litigation, so at this time, we wouldn't be able to discuss the item with you, but we appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Oh, yes, one more thing. Can I say this?
Sir, Mr. Moore has a question for you.
So I just, I just have one- I'm sorry. I just have one question for you, Mr. Charlie Powell. I know that you have meetings that take place. What day and time and place is your meeting?
Matter of fact, we having one this Thursday, 4699 Chief Road. Our meeting is the last Thursday in every month. I would like for y'all to come out there this Thursday for meet and greet so some of the Peoples out there can meet the new city council and the older city council. Maybe I didn't phrase that wrong, I didn't mean old. But they need to meet all of y'all. And I would like, if any of y'all earliest convenient, to contact me and through him, and I would tour y'all around there at my expense, that y'all see what's going on out there.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Appreciate it.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. At this time, councilors, we entertain comments from each of our councilors, and we'll start with Ms. Clark. Are you ready? Yes.
Michael. Thank you, Madam President. This past Wednesday, I attended the 74th Annual National Veterans Day Awards Dinner, and it was a wonderful evening celebrating our nation's veterans and Birmingham's role in creating this national holiday. Again, I want to express my gratitude for our veteran's service and the kind invitation to the dinner. Last Friday, I was able to join the mayor and some of my colleagues and Ensley High School alumni, as well as members of the community at the former Ensley High School site as the demolition of that former high school gets underway. And it's going to make way for a redevelopment of the 10-acre site that will be inclusive and catalytic and a big stabilizer for that area. And we know that this is hallowed ground for scores of yellow jackets, and we invite everyone to participate in the creation of a place we can all be proud of. This week, we're busy out in the neighborhoods. Yesterday, we toured the Tuxedo Neighborhood with President Maureen Coleman, and later this week, we'll be out touring Rising West Princeton with Ms. Costella Adams-Turrell. And these write-outs are a way, not only for our staff to get to know the neighborhood leaders, but also to understand in context some of the opportunities that abound in our districts, in our District 8 neighborhoods. We also have two neighborhood meetings this week. We've got the Green Acres Neighborhood Association tonight. The meeting's at 6:30, and it's in person at the Lifting Christ Worship Center located at 1001 Pine View Road. Also, the Ensley Neighborhood Association will host their meeting on Thursday via conference call at 6:00 PM. And the Five Points West Community continues its tradition of bringing holiday cheer this year with a tree lighting ceremony to be held on December 11th at 11:00 AM, and there will not be a parade this year. The Ensley Pratt Framework, Ensley Pratt City Framework Implementation Committee Meeting is again this Thursday, December 9th at 6:00 PM at McAlpine Rec Center. That's an in-person meeting, so wear your mask. And I wanted to share something that's just a little more somber. If I can get this, I never get to, let's see, this never works. Okay, on Saturday, December 11th, Faith in Action and Alabama Peacemakers Campaign invites you to ride in solidarity with families and friends of Birmingham's 2021 homicide victims. This is the Lament and Hope Memorial Motorcade, and memorial flags honoring the victims will be provided free of charge and can be attached to the window of your vehicles as you ride along in this motorcade. The lineup will start at 8:30 AM on December 11th at WC Patton Park. That's located at 3969 14th Avenue North. It'll leave the park at 9:30 AM and conclude at the Five Points West Library parking lot. So again, that's the Lament and Hope Memorial Motorcade on Saturday, December 11th, lineup at 8:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark, Councilor Moore.
Yes, so, all right, so I might mess this up, so help me out. All right, Madam President, I have a unanimous consent item that I would like to make a move for a motion for congratulatory resolution recognizing Ms. Altonia L. Dansby Goodman, whose 91st birthday will be November 21st. They're actually having a parade for her in North Avondale this Saturday at 2:00 PM, starting in the Hayes K-8 parking lot. And from what I understand, they've been having parades for her for the past couple of years, and so definitely want to send a big shout-out to her, and, yeah.
All right. So you move for unanimous consent?
Move for unanimous consent?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
And now the item. Now, move the resolution.
I move, oh, now I read everything that's-
No, now you just move for the resolution, and we'll vote on it.
Okay.
Just say move. So move.
So move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
There we go.
All opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I appreciate it. I do have some, uh, other announcements, so, um, yeah, so I do know that the South Woodlawn Neighborhood Association will be having their Neighborhood Association meeting, uh, tonight at six P.M., uh, via Zoom. And so, I would encourage everyone, um, I would encourage everyone to reach out to the Neighborhood Association President to get that information. Uh, I also wanna, uh, just send a big thank you to the Young Black Professionals, uh, group here in Birmingham. Uh, myself and Madam Pro Tem had an opportunity to go out and speak to a lot of the young professionals here in the city, uh, and just talk to them about, you know, what we do as city council members, as well as what they can do to get more involved in the community and to make a difference and make an impact. And, uh, it was a great time, and I truly, truly did enjoy myself. And then, lastly, I just, all this morning, I've, I mean, really all week, I've been getting calls and, you know, text messages, uh, just about, you know, the, uh, gun violence that has been taking place in our city. More specifically, uh, in, in the Kingston area. Um, I know that we, we had a gentleman come up last week who was, you know, very passionate about, um, just the lives of our young people in this city and how we need to do our part to address this issue. And not even a week later, you know, we, we had a shooting. And so, um, I'm just encouraging everyone, uh, to, number one, be in prayer, uh, for our, our families, um, our kids, um, and then whatever you can do, whether that's, you know, helping out with the neighborhood, uh, helping out with the Neighborhood Association, getting involved in some type of nonprofit organization that is doing the work, uh, to engage our young people and to engage families. Just find your place. A.G. Gass said, "Find a need and fill it." I'm encouraging everybody to do just that. Find that need and fill it, um, and just do whatever it is that you can. Uh, so, yeah, just wanted to say that, and thank you, Madam President. That is the end of my announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The, um, Planning and Zoning Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, December eighth, at three-thirty P.M. in the council chambers. Tonight, we have a meeting with the Five Point South Neighborhood Association at six o'clock. They are meeting in person at the Highlands United Methodist Church. We also have some vacancies on boards that are related to the, the Planning and Zoning Committee. The Birmingham Planning Commission has three vacancies right now and a number of members whose terms have expired, but they can be reappointed if we so please. But we have three vacancies on the Planning Commission, and we have three va- no, four vacancies on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Our Zoning Board of Adjustment is in trouble. So we need a real estate broker or Realtor, or realtist in honor of Council Hilliard, an architect, a building construction professional, and one non-affiliated member who can just be any old person. So we need, um, we need people to volunteer to be considered for these positions. They're very important to the city of Birmingham. We're behind the eight ball, but we're gonna get out from behind that eight ball. So any members of the council who have people in their districts that you think would be good for these positions, we can send you more information about the dates and times of the, that they meet. But we need citizens who are willing to do these, these, perform these duties from all over the city, not just, you know, the areas that I represent, because I can find people, but I don't want everybody on the commi- on these committees to be from one area of town. We need to spread the love. So if anyone has anyone they would like to suggest, please do. And that is it for me, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, have one announcement from, uh, Ms. Lois Germany. The Sixth Avenue Sliders Line Dance Fitness Ministry is giving away fabulous clothing, shoes, et cetera, on December fourth, nine A.M. to three P.M. at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. If you remember, last year was our first year having such a big event, which was very successful because we provided items to the community and the Hoover Apartment Complex fire victims. Um, so again, um, that is a clothing, shoes, et cetera giveaway, December fourth, nine A.M. to three P.M. at the Fountain Heights Rec Center, and the contact person for the Sixth Avenue Sliders is Ms. Lois Germany. Also want to thank, uh, Councilor Clark for, uh, copying me on, uh, correspondence to her constituents regarding, um, the train blockages. I hadn't seen that CBS forty-two report, um, previously, but, uh, Art Franklin, uh, and, and other reporters there at CBS forty-two sort of did a, you know, in-depth, uh, reporting on that situation, and I thought they did a great job of explaining it. Even had a high-level representative from Norfolk Southern, um, commenting on that situation. You know, to everyone else, please be advised that, um, we're in constant communication, uh, with the railroads. Um, we have a high-level meeting set up on December sixth, um, where we're going to be, uh, meeting to talk some solutions. I do want to couch that with, uh, the, you know, make sure that everyone has reasonable expectations. Ultimately, the solution to this problem is, is what we call grade separation. That means overpasses and underpasses, and, um, those, of course, uh, will require significant amounts of funding. However, in the infrastructure bill that was passed yesterday, uh, where Mayor Woodfin was present, there is, um, funding specifically in that bill for reconnecting neighborhoods. You know, especially neighborhoods that have been cut off by in- infrastructure. So we look forward to, um, learning more about those opportunities and some, supporting the, the mayor's efforts to apply for infrastructure, uh, dollars to address these issues. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, real quick, want to announce the, um, we'll be giving away on Saturday, uh, turkeys. Let me get the specific details here. Can't send everybody to the tube. Thought you had a video. Have a video?
Someone said you have a video. They're teasing me.
I'll save it. This hunter really wants to see it. Well, yeah, we're, we'll be giving away, um, a hundred turkeys on Saturday, as well as partnering with, uh, Calvary Resurrection Christian Church, and they'll be providing additional, uh, sides and Thanksgiving, uh, food. And so, this Saturday, seven-thirty-eight A.M. at Calvary Resurrection Christian Church. Want to invite, uh, the community out. If you need, uh, turkey or sides, come on out, um, and we'll be there from seven-thirty until we give it all away, so look forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we have some neighborhood meetings on today. East Thomas will meet tonight at six P.M. on a conference call. Evergreen will also meet tonight at six P.M. on a conference call. Smithfield Estates will meet tonight at six P.M. on a conference call, and Ensley will meet this Thursday at six P.M. on a conference call. So I highly recommend and suggest that the constituents, please, call your neighborhood president and start participating in your neighborhood meetings. Also, East Thomas Neighborhood Tree Planting, event hosted by Voca Materials and Rural Games will take place on this Friday at nine A.M. with registration starting at eight-thirty. All of our neighborhoods can benefit from these kinds of partnerships with making our communities beautiful, especially with the Rural Games coming to our city next summer. And also on today, we have a public safety meeting today at three P.M. in the city council chamber. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Tate.
Thank you. Um, not to compete with my colleague, Mr. Woods, but on Saturday, November twentieth, uh, we also will be hosting our annual Thanksgiving event. Uh, it's in the parking lot of Southeast Lake United Methodist Church. It will be from eleven A.M. to one P.M. It is first come, first served, uh, and we will be providing hot Thanksgiving lunches. So bring, bring family out, um, bring neighbors out, uh, pick up some turkey dressing, green beans rolls, and sweet potato casserole, which sounds very good, maybe because I'm hungry right now. Didn't have breakfast. Uh, but we're also gonna have Better Basics out there, and we're, so we're gonna have, um, some free educational books for those that come with their children. So you can pick up, um, a meal, Thanksgiving meal for the family, as well as get some educational reading material for, uh, from, for the young, young kids. It is going to be the same drive-through, uh, type setup as we did last year. So, uh, stay in your car, and we will just, uh, hand everything to you through your car window so you don't have to get out in the elements. We will be doing that for you. So we will see everybody at eleven o'clock, Southeast Lake United Methodist Church, um, this Saturday, the twentieth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Madam Pro Tem?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Also, Council Williams, make sure to save me a plate, and Council Woods, I'll need a turkey. I also saw here, one of our speakers, uh, was absent when we brought him up. So, Mr. Africa, if you wanna take three minutes, uh, just come up here.
This is okay to take this off. Good morning, and again, um, I want to congratulate the new council members, in particular, my new councilperson, uh, Ms. Tate, uh, you'll be hearing from me. I'm here this morning to ask for a roll call vote, supporting a resolution from this council, mayoral administration, and all patriotic Americans to go on record by action, showing their gratitude and support for honorably discharged World War II black veterans that were denied the nineteen forty-four G.I. Bill benefits for housing, housing loans, education, and job training, by y'all's support of the Sergeant Isaac Woodward and Sergeant Joseph Maddox G.I. Bill Restoration Act as presented by Congressman Jim Claiborne of South Carolina. With the passing of this bill, it will correct the extremely evil wrongdoings to these black vets, spouses, and their descendants by giving the survivors the exact same benefits the white vets, their spouses, and families received the past sixty years. Standing here with me is, should have been a Buffalo Soldier, but I think they're gonna get here late. But we've got a heavily decorated Korean and Vietnam War veteran, uh, William J. Osborne. If any of you all want to know how those benefits were denied, my father, who was a World War II veteran and a Buffalo Soldier, I am more than willing to quickly respond, because I know you want to go. And I'll come back maybe with the Buffalo Soldiers, but if you got the questions, please ask me. What we're gonna do, Bill, pull this up. When we do this interpreter center for Dynamite Hill to tell the true story of the children of Dynamite Hill, there's an honorarium that will be in there for the Dynamite Hill defenders. Many of them were vets. And the bombs went off all over this city, but they started on Dynamite Hill on Eleventh Court, just two blocks west of Eleventh Court. Unfortunately, the city didn't know the history, so they went and removed the burned-out ruins right up from Wilkson School. That was the very first one, in nineteen forty-seven. So, uh, Bill, thank you.
If I got any questions for me? This is typical Dynamite Hill. That's what I went to the city. That's my, my, my sister Jean Patricia. They call her Boog Blue. Dr. Jimmy Walker, the first black graduate of New Orleans Alabamian Middle School, and that's me in a little way around the hood.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Miles Representative, President Alexander, President Pro Tem, Smithelman, Councilors. I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to discuss briefly us Vietnam veterans, World War II veterans, Korean veterans, which Congressman Jim Claiborne, Democrat, South Carolina, um, Pro Tem, I'm not Pro Tem, majority. Who are the Congress gonna introduce? This bill will alleviate a lot of stress on veterans of color by providing the benefits that was bypassed just when we came from Vietnam, when it came from Korea, when it came from World War II. Our white comrades in, um, in arms, in the same theater we was in, receive these benefits. Housing, financial support for business ventures, land grants, and things like that, which were bypassed to veterans of color. And I strongly support this bill because of this. And it will alleviate a lot of homelessness we have in veterans here, especially with the Miles twenty-twenty-five plan. If we are given all the benefits that we deserve, then we wouldn't need any, where the priorities that you all have for your money here could be better spent somewhere else than on veterans. And I thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Thank both of you, and we appreciate you bringing this item to our attention. What we'd like to do is get some more information, and then we'll bring that for consideration for the council. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I'd love to speak to y'all after, after the council.
I think Council Williams has something.
I just wanted to say, hey, Willie, I haven't seen him in a minute. It's good to see you, sir. Mr. Osborne? It's good to see you, man. Hadn't seen you in a minute.
Say that again, please.
I said, "It's good to see you, man. I haven't seen you in a minute."
Hey, it's always good to see you. It's always good to see you, Councilor. Maybe we can discuss something, because some of them, yeah, some of them jumped in.
Sounds good.
Good to see everybody.
Good to see you too, huh?
Very glad to see you.
I'm doing what real veterans do for, for the cause for us, for, for our veterans of color.
Yes, sir.
All I want is my benefits with just your name. You know, I'm, I'm not asking for anything I shouldn't have. I just want what it's due. And I do hope, if this bill is introduced, and I'm optimistic it may pass. I'm optimistic. It's been a long hard time, though. But anyway, good day.
Thank you. We appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, for District Six announcements, congratulations to the Johns Valley Teaching Farms for the three-year grant from the Department of Agriculture, awarded to promote the growth of our, uh, urban farming and expand community gardens. Uh, we in District Six and really Seven, since we share a Western manner, trust the community food program can enhance the Western gardens and establish community garden for a number of years. The Western gardens will also have a workshop, uh, with Christmas decorations this Saturday from ten to twelve P.M. Also, um, I'm a member of the Junior League. We are hosting our annual Market Noel event. Uh, it was virtual last year, but it'll be in person at the Finley Center in Hoover, Alabama. It'll be this Wednesday, uh, November seventeenth through the twentieth. Vendors from across the state will set up booths for Christmas shopping. We will also have a first responders lunch, and the proceeds from the event go directly back into the community through our community. back into the community through our community projects. You can purchase tickets at marketnoel.net. Congratulations to Parker High School for advancing to the quarterfinals in the state football playoffs. Let's make a note to support our Birmingham District School. I'm a little disappointed the Ramsey lost, but that's okay. The Birmingham Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta sorority Incorporated will be having a Zoom program today honoring International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women at 6:00 PM. You can look on our Facebook page for how to register for that event, and that day is observed worldwide on November 25th. The regular scheduled PIS meeting will be held Tuesday, December 7th, at 2:00 PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, December 1st by noon. Email them to liquidity.wilson@birminghamal.gov. The next Budget and Finance meeting will meet on Monday, December 13th, at 3:30 PM. Submissions are due Wednesday, December 8th by noon. Email submissions to liquidity.wilson@birminghamal.gov. The Graymont Neighborhood will meet via teleconference at 4:30 PM tomorrow. The call-in number is 720-740-9717, and the access code is 5599688. Also, Black Friday will be here soon. Don't forget to shop locally in Birmingham. And lastly, congratulations to Darius Peace. He is a hairstylist and owner of Haya Beauty, which is located in downtown Birmingham, for being a recipient of the 2021 Master Pioneer Award. Thank you for creating a platform and safe space to showcase the beauty of coils, curls, twists, braids, and locks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. I believe, Ms. Tate, you said you had one more announcement?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to announce that District Nine is honored to be partnering with the Brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha, the Psi Lambda Chapter, and the Sisters of AKA, the Epsilon Uta Omega Chapter. This Saturday is going to be a turkey giveaway, one turkey per family while supplies last. Also, we'll be doing a voter registration and education drive, and it's going to be located at 914 Avenue E in Ensley from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Thank you very much. I'd like to give the following announcements from District Seven. The Green Acres Neighborhood will be meeting. I'll be joining Councilor Clark's team there this evening at 6:30 at Life Christ Worship Center. We will have the Utilities Committee meeting today at 2:00 PM in the chambers. District Seven is beginning our District Seven Days of Giving. We'll begin that on Wednesday, November 17th, where we'll be providing a meal prep basket giveaway to families, to, one family each in our 19 neighborhoods. These families have been selected by the neighborhood presidents, so we're giving them a full meal prep as selected by that neighborhood president, and so we'll distribute those on Wednesday, November 17th, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. So your neighborhood president will contact you, and they will pick that basket up and deliver it for you. We're also giving away turkeys in District Seven. We have, in conjunction with the Birmingham Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, will be giving away turkeys on Saturday, November 20th, at First Baptist Church Roosevelt City, and that's at 3012 Malcolm Avenue, and again, that'll be from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. Then we'll move on over to Kimbrel Homes, that's right across from Winona High School. We'll be giving turkeys away there at 2817 Wallace Covington Circle. We'll do that from 12:30 to 2:00, and those turkeys will be there until we give them all out. We also have some families and churches in District Seven that are also providing giveaways for our families. The McClure family will have their turkey giveaway, and that'll be on Sunday, November 21st, at 2:00 PM. They'll be giving those out at Powderly Elementary School. There'll be one turkey per household while supplies last, and that'll be at 1901 20th Street Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama. I think this is their, either their eighth or ninth giveaway that they provide for families in the Powderly neighborhood, so we thank them. We all want to be sure that we bestow blessings upon our families as they prepare for Thanksgiving. Those are the end of my announcements, so at this time, councilors, we can entertain them. Before we do that, let me please thank the officers on duty today. Cedric Pinkert from City Hall, Elastir Taylor from East Precinct, and Marco Easley, East Precinct. Anybody want to do the duties?
No, please.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, councilors, meeting adjourned.